We're going to start here in just a few minutes, three or four minutes. If you have not signed in, please do sign in. I want to make sure that we know who's here and certainly the ones who are going to be witnesses and want to speak. We want to make sure we have everyone's correct spelling. This young lady here is going to need to have it and then also our clerks back there need to have it too. So our minutes are correct and we have the right spelling. But we'll start in about three minutes. Thank you. Good morning. I'll call this commission meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call the row.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
And Guiding Commissioner Lynn Moore.
Present. If you all will join me with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Okay. Today, today we have the agenda we need to approve, the consent agenda. We have approval of today's agenda. We have approval of meeting minutes and we have a bunch of them. We'll be approving and we've already looked at them all. Six eighteen twenty-five, regular session. Six twenty, twenty-five, regular sections, session. Six twenty-four, twenty-five, regular session. Six twenty-six, regular session. Six thirty, twenty-five, regular session. Six thirty, twenty-five, closed session per RSMO six one zero dot oh two one dot one litigation. Those are the minutes. And then we also have some financials. We've already looked at these. We have an auditor monthly report, June twenty-five, and we had a certified court order, oh seven dash ten, twenty twenty-five dash oh one, road and bridge sales tax. We also have, the third one is a campus change order, number seven, that was approved and we just need to list that because that was out of emergency approval and we got that And so we also have only one item today for the, for the other items for consideration and that is the hearing on Holder Road to vacate a portion of Holder Road. Then at the end, we'll have communications and I will go ahead and, and start to kind of describe how this meeting is going to go. Commissioner Williams, if you want to read just the...
If you don't mind, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry. Yeah, we got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. We got a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Just trying to get ahead of myself. So, okay, Commissioner Williams, if you, we just got a few little rules that we want to make sure everybody follows. I'm sure that we're going to do that.
Yes, the Christian County Commission has complied a list of rules below to ensure the meeting is conducted in a safe and orderly and efficient manner. Please keep all phones, devices silent and refrain from use. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, interrupting, making loud noises, threats, or violence are strictly prohibited. Do not speak out of turn. You may not approach the commission during the meeting without consent. Speakers with handouts must provide them to the secretary via electronic means prior to the meeting. And please refrain from the use of inappropriate, offensive, or vulgar language.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. I'm going to read about a page and a half of information that really set the tone on how this meeting will be conducted today. So just kind of bear with me. This explains our process. We are here to consider, we are here to consider a petition filed to vacate a portion of Holder Road under Missouri revised statute two twenty-eight dot one ten. That statute places the burden on the, the petitioners to show that the portion of that road they seek to vacate is useless and that the remaining of the same has unreasonable burden upon the county. Whether a public road is useless is determined by whether it is a public utility and our Supreme Court has indicated that a finding of the ground for vacation required under section two twenty-eight, one ten, dot one, is in effect, finding of no public utility. The commission received the petition on March the thirty-first, twenty-five. The petition was publicly read by the commission on April the third, twenty-five. The commission received the remonstrance to the petition on May fifth, twenty-five. The remonstrance was publicly read by the commission on May fifteenth, twenty-five. Pursuant to RSMO two twenty-eight dot one ten dot two, notice of the filing of the petition and of the road sought to be vacated was posted in not less than three public places in Christian County and in the township where the road is located, at least twenty days before the first day of the term of this commission. And a copy of the same was personally served on all of the persons residing in the district whose lands are crossed, are, are touched by the road proposed to be vacated and the, in the same manner as other notices are required to be served by law. Because it is not feasible to hear testimony from each of the individuals who have signed the documents at issue and any other members of the public who wish to, to provide comment on the issues before the commission, we have previously provided notice that individuals should submit comments and evidence to the commission ahead of time. The commission will consider that evidence as commission exhibit one and the same will be considered as part of the record. The petitioners will be given, now this is important, this is our process, we're getting ready to start. The petitioners will be given sixty minutes to present any evidence and testimony they seek to admit on the issues. That's including the witnesses. And if they don't use the sixty minutes, then, then we're not going to give that time back. So sixty minutes for the petitioners. The next group, the remonstrators, will be given also sixty minutes to present any evidence and testimony they seek to admit on the issues. If they don't use all their sixty minutes, that time is gone. There will be no cross-examination of witnesses. The commission has set aside sixty minutes for the three of us to call witnesses or ask any questions to each of the, any of the commissioners may, may have. So if we don't use our sixty minutes, then it's gone. Okay? At the end of that, the evidence will be, after all the evidence is presented and the record is closed, I will entertain a motion to either approve or to deny this petition. We will make that decision at the end of this meeting. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the petitioners and, and whoever is representing the petitioners can come on up first and, and we'll, we'll get started then. Write your name and we'll make sure that we've got your...
Start the timer.
Yeah.
There you go. You're on.
Okay.
It's not, that's for my part. Someone I went to school with once said, "Don't take your road for granted. It could be taken away from you." Holder Road is not just a road. It is my home of nearly fifty-five years. And I've been wondering how the perspective of those of us who actually live on Holder Road can be so different from that of those who use it to save less than three minutes of driving time. I decided that every driver who doesn't live here sees it as a single experience while we, the residents of the Holder Road neighborhood, experience it as a single, single, daily onslaught of nearly seventeen hundred or more vehicles of all types, cars, pickup trucks, delivery trucks and trailers, dump trucks, semis, and more. For us, it's everything, all the way, everywhere, all the time, a constant thrum like living in an industrial area. The never-ending presence of this uncontrolled traffic impedes, negatively affects, our ability and right to use the property that we own as we choose. Petitioners set forth in our originally, original filing with this commission examples of how our cause fits within the requirements of Missouri statute two two eight point one one zero. I'll expand on that in a bit, but feel I should correct some of the errors in the remonstrance since it has been presented to you. Paragraph one of the remonstrance states the law. The statute requires only the number of signatures, which we well surpassed when we submitted our petition, with signatures from the vast majority of the residents of Holder Road. In fact, we submitted more than even the greater number of signatures required to bring into play another portion of the statute, which allows vacancy when the road, quote, "no longer serves the public health, safety, and welfare." Beyond that, the statute calls for a finding of uselessness and unreasonable financial burden, as Lynn has mentioned. The statute requires neither public interest nor convenience of the public to be considered, nor are they mentioned. However, since the remonstrance brings them up, I'll address them. Which public are we talking about? The members of the Holder Road community are the public. The public whose freedom to move about and use their own property as desired is daily curtailed, limited, and abridged by the presence and actions of another section of members of the public who feel entitled to that use themselves. They may feel that entitlement through the expectations of custom and habit. That's the way we always do it, or the road's always been there. The case law included in our documents has this to say about that, to paraphrase the court. Given the entire situation, if there are two routes, whether used by accident or convenience, which serve the public's use, there's your public utility, and when that use can be served as well as by one as the other, then the maintenance and support of both of them instead of just the one may be regarded as a waste of public funds and therefore regarded as useless. And whose convenience are we talking about anyway? Again, the statute does not mention convenience. Clearly, for the residents of Holder Road, our road is a necessity. It is not merely a convenience. A member of the opposition in one of several interviews given regarding the matter specifically cited the convenience of our road, opining further that ZZ had a lot of curves. In fact, Holder Road has as many curves as does ZZ. It is also narrower than ZZ. Back in the day when you wouldn't be encountering speeding loaded dump trucks or semis, the narrowness of the road wasn't an issue. Farmers on tractors weren't playing chicken with oncoming traffic. You could stand by the side of the road and chat with your neighbors, which is what helps develop community. Nearly two thousand vehicles weren't coming down the road every day. The remonstrance claims that Holder Road is a vital road providing essential services to schools and businesses. That's what highways ZZ and fourteen are for. ZZ is also recognized as being underutilized, as Miranda Beatles would confirm. It is also under consideration for removal of those offending curves. Absolutely no access to either a school or a business would be cut off when the vacancy is implemented. When I attended Clever High School, our bus picked up a student just barely south of the county line road. On a daily basis, we always made it to class on time. Bus routes are subject to change and pickup times are adaptable to that change. Several of the signatories to the petition are business owners, some of whom operate the business on their own property. They clearly don't agree that the vacancy will negatively affect them. There are many routes to all towns in Christian and Green counties that don't involve the use of Holder Road. No one is prevented from going from point A to point B. Anyone living in this area knows that Green Valley Creek regularly floods and becomes impassable. What does everyone do then? They turn around and go another way. Perhaps annoyed that the road closed sign that they'd ignored were telling the truth, but their lives aren't upended and they get to where they're wanting to go. Christian County has the duty to provide safe roads, not shortcuts. The cost of maintaining safety through the Holder Road cut-through are prohibitive, with dirt work, road reconstruction and elevation, removal of vegetation, and consideration of possible damage to the Riparian Corridor at play. Often, people try to cross, leaving parts of their car, sometimes a complete vehicle in the creek and on my property there. One pickup rested on my property in my creek bed for several days. We would prefer not to have to put up a gate, but realize, given the recurrent practices of ignoring the road closed signs, a physical barrier will be necessary to induce compliance from folks unwilling to believe a "not a through" road sign. Access for emergency vehicles will be gained through a system utilized in this and many surrounding counties, one locating, one location being just across the James from our neighborhood. A Knox box would be used in tandem with our gate allowing access. NIXA and Republic are familiar with that system. Clever doesn't currently use it, but if the area keeps growing as it has been, the time has come for them to adapt. Highways fourteen and ZZ have all the features necessary to support the traffic that Holder Road is currently shouldering. Their maintenance is up to the state, not the county. Their curves are banked. Their rights of way are wider. There are no steep drop-offs. Holder's surface is being beaten apart by heavily loaded dump trucks traveling in tandem, semis and other long, heavy, and otherwise large vehicles on a daily basis. Holder has just as many curves as ZZ, none banked, and one is completely blind. The things being considered to make Holder safer are extremely expensive, ruinous of the character of the road, and would encourage the introduction of more vehicles rather than the respect for and consideration of the safety and property rights of the residents. I've heard various folks speak about how pretty the drive down our road is. The section they're talking about is our part, the part with an avenue of trees and shade that gives forth to a wet weather creek that's beautiful after a little rain, angry after too much, which happens regularly, as I've mentioned. Christian County continues to grow. The man for whom our road is named, Harry Holder, and his wife Bertha, were my neighbors. My sister and I went down to their house frequently after school and on weekends, whether to help in the garden, eat dinner, or just to sit and talk. Then, on the rare occasion that anyone very slowly drove by, Harry would point and say, "That's so-and-so." You knew who everybody was coming down the road. Yes, things change. Sometimes, that change is progress, but unmanaged change is not necessarily progress and can definitely be detrimental. Anyone with property to develop would remain able to do so, whether they're south or north of the vacancy. They'll have easy, easy access to several highways to reach any destination they desire. Surely, the continued use and abuse of Holder Road is not the linchpin, linchpin of their plans. What is now Holder Road existed as a dirt and gravel road or track in many configurations before nineteen fifty-one, nineteen fifty-five, when the then-landowners conveyed a right-of-way to the county for a dollar. Until nineteen ninety-five or so, when some folks, including two who have signed our petition, explored having it paved and a neighborhood meeting was held with Western District Commissioner Bill Barnett. Both the Spence and Hobbs families attended that and voiced their opposition to the paving, visualizing what would come our way if it happened. The county did pave the road, but only to the point of the property lines at either end of the currently proposed vacancy. In the following years, you could hear cars screaming down the hill and straightaway, only to slam on brakes as the drivers encountered the dirt and gravel surface. Eventually, and without further consultation with the property owners affected, the county paved that remaining section. Clearly, the road surface had been keeping the traffic somewhat in check. Since paving, but especially after mapping utilities came on the scene, the traffic on Holder Road has only increased. Those in opposition cite disruption to their lives if they can't use Holder Road. We must point out that we, and our neighbors in the Holder Road community, actually need our road. To us, it is a necessity. To others, it is a mere convenience, a maximum savings of three minutes. Two actual highways designed to carry the heavy traffic, both in weight and sheer number, are readily available, superior, convenient, and safe. One of the things the opposition laughed about in their social media discussions and thought was ridiculous was our concern with our quality of life and how their constant presence in and use and abuse of our neighborhood was affecting it negatively. Yet now, in the remonstrance, they cite damage to their quality of life and economic consequences if they have to drive three or more minutes, or three more minutes when, than they, than they're used to, but they cite no evidence for this. When Holder Road is vacated, all citizens will still be able to be consumers anywhere they wish. The repercussions we experience are real, not hypothetical. In twenty twenty-one, after privately having a traffic count with volume, speed, and time of day conducted, I wrote to the then-existing commission and provided the data, pleading for relief and suggesting several ways to remedy the situation. I received no response. When Lynn ran for presiding before the election, he was reaching out for salient issues and we spoke by phone. I advised him of my letter with its attached evidence. He told me of his eye condition and so I'm not sure if he ever actually read it, but we did discuss it over the phone. I believe he could confirm there was no cursing involved. After his election, there was a slightly heightened presence of law enforcement on our road, although it was neither consistent nor long-term, which is what's required to convince drivers to change their behavior. For ages, years ago anyway, kids would avoid driving to and through Republic because its police department had the reputation of being active and serious about stopping and ticketing speeders. When we had a visible law enforcement presence, it helped, despite it usually not spanning either rush hour or subsequent days. I personally saw several vehicles stopped and pursued and tickets issued. But the sheriff informed the Holder Road residents that our road has been assigned basically as much coverage as it's going to get. I understand that there are limits to the county's deep pockets, so to speak. What coverage exists currently is generally staged at either Gan Road and fourteen to the south, or Terrell Valley Road and ZZ to the north, not on Holder Road. So effectively, no one's watching and seeing what's happening on Holder Road. We've never been given a proposal to widen Holder Road or to have a walkway installed. Your consultants at Olson would agree that highway and road studies show that widening roads invites traffic to an area, increasing traffic numbers and lessening safety. This is known as induced demand. A widened road will attract the traffic to fill it, basically the nature of hordes-a-vacuum principle. We already suffer from the spillover effect when drivers leaving highway speeds tend to continue those speeds and other driving habits through the residential areas they subsequently encounter. Further, we've already experienced, through a lack of action throughout the years, despite the alarm having been raised many times about the conditions on our road, our rural residential neighborhood road is being forced into a higher road classification than it is built for. I know we live in a large and growing county and do not have the only location in need of attention. The solutions I originally offered up took this into account and suggested several approaches not dependent upon man-hours costing the county money, but they weren't used. Vacating the specified portion of Holder Road is the most effective and least costly alternative now available to us. It promotes both the safety of the residents and the cut-through drivers by removing traffic to roads better designed to handle it. It saves the county much-needed funds which could be spent elsewhere instead of redefining and repairing our declining road surface or cutting down our trees, as we will happily maintain. maintain our own property. And it respects property rights while still enabling the freedom of travel and commerce, allowing for growth. Holder Road is where the members of the Holder Road community have chosen to live. We don't want our road to be taken away. It was quiet when we came here. We've endured its abuse by others, not silently, but sadly, without joy. The opposition actually began putting up their "say no" signs on our own property when they were recruiting their social media group. Beyond the traffic volume and speed numbers, this is not a numbers game. There are plenty of supporters around this county, area, state, and country with whom I've spoken who understand the reasons and need for our cause. The statute recognizes the importance of the hyper-local buy-in since the residents all along a single road are, by definition and mere population distribution, always going to be less in-number than those living outside of the road. We have the buy-in. The vast majority of the residents on Holder Road neighborhood signed the petition to vacate. We did not have to hold raffles to induce participation and gain signatures. We talked to those most affected by being part of our community. We are the public, who've had to continuously alter our daily schedules to avoid being swamped by traffic. We are the public who can't retrieve our mail without a strategic plan of attack. We are the public who pick up the voluminous trash tossed out by the cut-through drivers at times needing to call the county guys to assist with removing particularly large items such as refrigerators and multiple old console televisions. I suppose, when the property you're using doesn't belong to you, you don't mind despoiling it and leaving a mess for others to clean up. I've driven Mount Carmel, Mount Sinai, Willoughby, and other roads, and have never seen traffic or trash there as I've observed here on Holder Road. Those roads simply don't experience the volume of traffic that we do, especially which isn't generated by their own residents. We experience a tremendous amount of noise, not the friendly cattle lowing, chickens squawking, dogs barking, or tractors cutting and harvesting hay, which you expect in the country, but revved engines, increased acceleration out of curves, super-loud stereos, rude shouting, gestures. Several times, I've adapted the schedule to walk my dogs to accommodate the traffic overload, originally leaving at 7:00 a.m. to travel the length of my property to the creek, but generally pushing past what is clearly a two-hour-plus rush hour into less trafficked and hotter and hotter times of the day. I can no longer pull invasive weeds without concern for my safety. One resident drives daily to the battlefield, 15 minutes or so, a round trip, to avoid the Holder Road traffic to walk her pets. Another neighbor would love to walk her dogs on the level surface of the road, but can't because of the vehicles. About 18 months ago, a family moved out in less than a year of moving in citing the traffic. Another, with children, moved after a car flew off the road above their property into the yard. These examples are by no means exhaustive, but why would the disruption of our lives be thought any less significant than a three-minute time savings? Thank you.
I am Patricia Hobbs, petitioner, along with Susan Spence and my husband Stephen Hobbs. Lynn has read the Missouri statute. I have given the commissioners this, which I'm going to be reading and speaking from, and also the exhibits that will be shown on the screen are in the other folder. Basically, Susan gave a big overview, and I'm going to provide some of the details that establish the facts of our case. Lynn cited the statute, and below that statute, references are given below dealing with the issue of the definition of useless. The case cited is Burrows versus the County Court of Carter County, and the court uses the opinion of Judge J. Spencer in the matter of Trask, and this is what he says. "The question to be determined by the commissioners is whether the highway described or any distinct part thereof is useless, and in determining this question, it is necessary that they should consider the entire situation, including not only the entire crossroad with its branches, but the avenues as well. And if the public service will be as well conserved by the use of one branch as with both, then one or the other may be regarded as useless. Thus, if two highways are parallel, though both may be used by the public as accident or convenience, may occasion, nevertheless, if one will subserve the public use substantially as well as both, then the maintenance and the support of two highways in place of one may be regarded as a waste of public funds, and one of them may be regarded as devoted to a useless purpose." Judge Spencer goes on to say, "I note also what contestants say in respect to the use of the expression 'useless' and haven't examined the authority given. It is the duty of the court to so construe the words of a statute that it will accomplish and not defeat the purpose for which it was clearly intended. The term 'useless' is seldom employed in its absolute sense. So to-do in this instance would reduce the statute to an absurdity and make highways like the laws of the Medes and Persians forever irrevocable. That the term should be regarded as employed in its qualified meaning is made evident by the use of the expression 'practically useless' by the learned judge in the decision cited by the contestant, and is an authority that the uselessness of the highway must be a practical uselessness and not an absolute one. Hence, the test is not whether any use is in fact made of the part of the highway sought to be discontinued, but whether the part remaining after the discontinuance will or will not subserve every practical public purpose that is now subserved by both." So we believe Judge Trask has actually eliminated the idea of convenience being a reason. We believe that applying a practical uselessness is warranted in the Holder Road case when the entire situation is considered. Despite both being used by the public as accident or convenience, alternatives exist and therefore the part remaining after the discontinuance will subserve every practical public purpose that is now subserved by both. Please see Exhibit 1. In this case, the two options are not equal. The alternative to using Holder Road is superior. The main objection to using the alternative is that it takes longer, and it does. It takes three minutes longer. This can easily be seen by using mapping utilities. The length of Holder Road takes four minutes; to go around takes seven minutes, the difference being three minutes. This distance is seen as untenable by the opposition despite the fact that people spend much more than three minutes in a day scrolling through social media or watching streaming videos. Bypassing Holder Road by driving on Highway ZZ and Highway 14 is also safer. The highways are designed to carry greater numbers and sizes of vehicles as well as permitting higher speeds because they are safer than the roads with lower speeds. Complaints about the curves on Highway ZZ are offset by the fact that Holder Road has even more curves with more limited visibility. State highway right-of-way widths are 60 feet rather than the 40 on the collector and the sub-collector roads such as Holder Road. Holder Road was scheduled for paving this year. As such, bids had been received for various component parts. The following figures are only for the Hobbs and Spence portions of the road for that scheduled work. Paving would have cost $28,000; cutting down and trimming trees, $25,000; striping, $5,700; signs, $3,000, for a total of $61,700. This poses an unreasonable financial burden to the county taxpayers, given that the road is practically useless. This is only the current project. Of course, there is continued maintenance that will add burden to it, and the other parts of Holder Road not to be vacated will require less maintenance because of decreased traffic. Closing off of this portion of the road also makes it unnecessary to install the box culvert at the low-water bridge. Complaints to the county will diminish. Any trash dumping will be the responsibility of the owners and not the county. Please see Exhibit 2. So those are the reasons we believe that our petition meets the qualifications of the statute. So that tells why the commissioners may vote to vacate the road, but I'm going to explain why they should. Residents of Holder Road have stated that the road is being used like a highway. Under the county definitions, Holder Road is classified as a sub-collector road. Note the road definitions from the county's website. Collector and sub-collector roads are intended to move traffic from neighborhoods to arterial roads. Arterial roads are meant for through-traffic with controlled, limited access to abutting properties. Highway 14 is a primary arterial road, and Highways N and ZZ are secondary arterial roads. Holder Road is being used like a highway because it is serving almost entirely traffic moving from highways to highways that cut through traffic and only in very small part aiding neighborhood traffic to the arterials. The distinction between a collector road and a sub-collector road is the number of dwellings served by the road. The Holder Road area, including Woodland Park and the eastern half of Kerr, have only 37 dwellings, falling far short of the 100-dwelling designation for a collector road. That Holder Road is being used like a highway can be seen by looking at the road statistics. First, looking at the speed. When the speed was evaluated on September 13th, 2023, 76% of the traffic were driving over the speed limit. Of those, 50% of that 76% were driving over 40 miles an hour when the speed limit is The 2023 figures were part of a road safety audit done by Olson, a Springfield engineering firm. Although speed has been a problem, and that is what has been addressed through the years by Susan and our neighbor Janice Markley, the volume of traffic is an even greater issue, and stronger parallels to indicate highway-type use are evident. The traffic that was counted on September 23rd was counted at three different locations on Holder Road and was from 1,663 to 1,697 at the ZZ intersection. Since most Holder Road and Woodland Park neighbors would affect traffic at only one end of the other, but not usually both, the difference in the number represents Holder Road neighborhood traffic. Holder Road by a huge margin is serving as a cut-through between highways. Okay, now, I have a lot of data on the next page or so, so I'm only going to summarize it because of time limitations. The summary is in that first box, but there is more detailed data to follow. At Highway 14, 1,150 vehicles a day are turning between Highway 14 and Holder Road. About 1,000 of those are going to and from the NICSa direction. About 600 vehicles a day are crossing Highway 14 between Highway N and Holder Road, so are going straight across the intersection in both directions. At the other end of Holder Road at ZZ, about 1,650 vehicles are turning between Holder Road and going northbound or coming from the north on Highway ZZ. The comparable numbers at each end indicate that Holder Road is serving almost entirely cut-through traffic between one highway and another. And just remember, our road is not that kind of road. It is a sub-collector road, not an arterial road meant to be funneling and channeling highway traffic. In addition, MoDOT keeps traffic volume statistics on a website map. A MoDOT representative explained to me that very few locations maintain traffic counts 24/7, 365 days a year. These figures are for a point in time which almost certainly does not coincide with the figures collected for the Olson analysis. However, they come close enough for us to see trends. See Exhibit 4, and thank you for changing that. MoDOT's map shows segments of highway traffic only when interrupted by another highway that it intersects. Therefore, we can see the figures showing the change in Highway 14 traffic as it crosses Highway N and Highway ZZ. Notice, as Highway 14 traffic moves from east to west, it diminishes at each intersection as vehicles turn off. Correspondingly, the traffic numbers increase when the traffic is moving from west to east. Notice particularly, as designated by the red boxes, the change in traffic volume at the two intersections of interest. The change in traffic volume at the intersection of Highway N and Holder Road and Highway 14 is twice the change in traffic in vehicle numbers at the intersection of Highway 14 and Highways ZZ, even though the cross-traffic is less down at that point. Twice as much movement of traffic occurs at the Holder Road-Highway N intersection with Highway 14 than at the ZZ intersection. Please see Exhibit 5. MoDOT's traffic volume shows that the 1,669 vehicles travel daily on Highway N, which is less than the daily traffic on Holder Road. However, the Olson figures that that intersection allowed me to update that figure to 1,932 that are traveling on Highway N. So Holder Road's almost 1,700 vehicles are fewer, of course, but it is comparable to the traffic on Highway N perhaps two or three years ago, which would be two or three years ago in 2023. In addition, notice the very similar traffic numbers during the heaviest traffic hours for both Highway N and Holder Road. But Holder Road does not have the qualities of a highway. It doesn't have the characteristics. It doesn't have the necessary things to make it safe, even though similar vehicle numbers are being crammed onto it. Some residents from south of Holder Road have claimed increased traffic on their roads too, implying that Holder Road residents are only experiencing what everyone is experiencing, but this cannot be true. South of the county line on Highway N, the MoDOT 1,669 traffic figures drops to 535. If we subtract the 535 from the 1,932, we get 1,400 vehicles traveling on Highway N in that four-mile stretch down to the county line road. That includes the crossroads of Green Valley Road, Gerard Road, Mount Sinai, Mount Carmel, Willoughby, Jasmine Karib, and the Hidden Valley Roads area. But each is receiving only a fraction of that 1,400-vehicle count. Therefore, those individual roads cannot be experiencing the same traffic by a long shot that Holder Road is experiencing. It defies logic to believe that roads that lead only to neighborhoods or one golf course can possibly be experiencing the vehicle numbers of Holder Road, which is connecting traffic of three highways. If we look at the other end of Holder Road at ZZ, the counts that were used by Olson also show what the through-traffic is, the traffic that is moving on ZZ going past Holder Road and going to the west, and those coming from the west and passing Holder Road, and there's 1,962 vehicles that are passing Holder Road. The Holder Road daily vehicle number of nearly 1,700 daily rivals even the traffic on Highway ZZ, but it is not a highway. This problem will only get worse. Holder Road, as a sub-collector road defined to carry a maximum of 800 vehicles daily, is experiencing highway-like numbers. Exhibit 6 shows that many areas of subdivision and development south of Holder Road already exist, but there are also many more large tracts of land which are ripe for development from the southern end of Holder and southward, and they're circled in blue, and also the ones that I put acreage in on some of those. Notice the remonstrance item from the opposition stating that their property values will decrease and development opportunities diminish. This supports our contention that development directly from the south, as well as across the James River coming to and from the NICSa area, will increase causing even more traffic problems on Holder Road. In addition to the potential for development, it is well-known that Republic is experiencing a business and population boom, attracting even more people to the surrounding areas. Wouldn't it be better to do something about this problem now rather than later when it's worse? As noted, the alternative... So then there are the safety issues to consider. As noted, the alternate route of Highway 14 and ZZ is superior. The inability of Holder Road to handle comparable traffic is compounded by many The inability of Holder Road to handle comparable traffic is compounded by many factors. The following extracts pertinent points from the Olson report. Note that these are objective safety issues. They're not subjective, just our opinion. They are objective safety issues based on safety standards adopted by Christian County. The issues noted for the entire road include that there are no shoulders present, there are roadside ditches and drop-offs, there are no super elevation to aid curve navigation. I'm going, there are some things that Susan already said that I'm going to skim over a little bit. The, in areas where there are curves, the Olson report includes Exhibit 7, please. Limited sight distance, especially on curves. Over 40% of all crashes reviewed occurred in the middle section of Holder Road. Fast aggressive driving in icy conditions were noted in several of the crashes. Trees contribute to both lessening visibility as well as shading of the road retarding ice melting. Vacating the portion of Holder Road owned by the Hobbses and Susan Spence will eliminate four out of six problem curves and the tree-lined area inhibiting ice melting. One person attending the Clever Library meeting addressing what she perceived to be a problem in fire departments reaching areas south of Highway 14 said that no matter how remote the chance, even if one life were saved, it would be worth it. With even more dangerous conditions existing on Holder Road on a daily basis than on highway routes, especially with the large traffic volume, shouldn't that same standard apply? If safety is a concern, then diverting Holder Road traffic to the highway should be encouraged. Please see Exhibit 8. Another curve not identified on the Olson Road is dangerous because of other issues. And one person more recently poo-pooed the idea that there were any mail, problem mailboxes on this road. And that comes from what Susan was talking about, about people driving through do not understand all of the issues that are involved. There is a more than four-foot drop-off right behind that mailbox. You cannot stand next to it, you cannot stand behind it. And the curve, you can see the curve coming up from Holder Road, I mean, from Kerr Road, that they, that you cannot see the traffic coming. And as Susan said, there were some issues with more recent people driving. At least four of the other neighbors have personally seen vehicles losing control as they crashed onto private property. Before the age of cellphones, people would walk up to our house and ask us to call friends or a tow truck, mainly because they were DUI drivers. The DUI drivers do not call 911 to get help. Many people do, and then moving on from the safety issues to individual property rights, many people do not understand, please see Exhibit 9, that Steve and Patty Hobbs and Susan Spence actually own the land below and around the part of Holder Road that runs through their property. The county does not own the land and has only a right-of-way through their properties. The road runs diagonally across the Hobbs Square 40-acre parcel, bisecting it and comprising nearly a third of a mile of road. We use both sides of our property. We move cattle back and forth across the road to the two available pastures. Although we try to do this during low-traffic hours, it always requires extra help to manage the traffic. We make use of both barns that are on the opposite side of the road. We are unable to cut down diseased trees or repair the fences along the road down to the Low Water Bridge. A cross fence had to be constructed to prevent cattle from getting to the area where the fence needs repairs. Some problems with the fence have come about because of cars going off the road. The land on that westward side of the road is a steep hillside that does not allow easy access to vehicles and equipment needed for those tasks. The property rights of the Hobbses and Susan Spence are being infringed by the constant barrage of traffic on the road, limiting and controlling what they can do with their own property adjacent to the county's right-of-way. In addition to these, they are ridiculed at the thought that they have the right to enjoy their property by walking down the road. Instead, they are expected to drive elsewhere to walk, such as the battlefield, or walk on the rougher terrain of their properties, which would require regular maintenance. It seems ironic that the opposition does not want to spend an extra three minutes driving around to the superior alternative route, but they expect the property owners to drive the longer route of about seven minutes to the battlefield to walk, or to maintain walkable paths on their property while protecting themselves against ticks, snakes, gopher holes, and other critters. Please see Exhibit 10. The private property rights should be a concern and respected by all. The road going through the Spence and Hobbs property is predicated on rights-of-way granted to the county in 1955 for $1. Exhibit 11. The road does not appear on the USGS topographical map until 1960. The ground under and around the road belongs to Hobbs and Spence. The 1955 conditions and circumstances are very different from those now in existence, and Susan explained the changes that caused such a drastic difference in the traffic on our road. But in 1950, the census that is just before the, the land was conveyed, the conveyance, the right-of-way was conveyed to the county, in Lincoln Township, there were 774 people, men, women, and children living in the county. 774 in the whole township. Of those 774 men, women, and children living in Lincoln Township, 285 listed occupations. 213 were farmers or farm helpers. Only 72 had other occupations. There was virtually no commuter traffic. If Harry Holder were making the decision today to give the county the right-of-way through the middle of his property for a dollar, would he agree, knowing that the two or three people driving through the middle of his property in a day, there would be 1,700, that he would be expected not to walk down his own road? He couldn't safely move his cattle and hogs across a highway? He would be thought entitled if he believed that the use of his own property was more important than people driving through that property who not only do not live on the road, but could go another way that would add only three minutes to their travel? The concerns and the property of, about the property rights and the property values for the opponents, as stated in their remonstrance, are hypothetical. They are real for the Holder Road residents. Remediations have been discussed and attempted. It has been said that the residents of Holder Road were offered a solution of widening the road and providing walkways, and they rejected it. We never heard that. Miranda Beatles, at the meeting in the Clever Library, said that the residents are not asked. Somebody in the audience, somebody who was attending that day said, "Do you ask the residents?" And she said, "No, we don't." Widening the road and adding walkways would require a very large amount of taxpayer dollars. Studies show that widening roads does not make them safer, rather it makes drivers more careless and they drive faster. It certainly isn't an option that we would have supported. Holder Road resident Drew Hilpert, attorney-at-law, previous city attorney, and local government attorney for the past 20 years, states that widening the road is not a viable option. Drew had to work today, so he's not here. Drew says, "To the extent the commission believes that widening Holder Road is either a positive alternative to closing a portion of Holder Road, or a good idea regardless of such a closure, I write to express my strong opposition to the proposed widening of Holder Road. Holder Road has become a cut-through route between Republic and NICSa, and speeding is already a serious and ongoing issue for residents. While closing a portion of the road would solve that problem, widening the road will only encourage faster traffic and more dangerous driving behavior. In addition, it will, it is highly unlikely that the county will have the funding necessary to address the most challenging portion of the road, the steep drop-down to the Low Water Bridge, which sits in a valley of mostly solid rock. Any widening there would require extensive blasting and fillwork. It's a cliff on one side, and it's a ditch on the other side. And all while disrupting, any widening there would require extensive blasting and fillwork, all while disrupting an important natural stormwater path that lies at the bottom of the valley. As a taxpayer in Christian County, I believe this would be an inappropriate use of taxpayer dollars. There are a lot of needs in the county, and going to the expense of blasting and widening Holder in order to make Holder Road into an arterial freeway where people can go 65 instead of 50 is not one of them. If you don't widen that stretch of road, then the likely result is a wider, faster road that suddenly narrows after a sharp curve to a small bridge, creating an even more hazardous condition than currently exists." Mr. Hilpert brings up a very important point about the watershed that exists in that narrow portion of Holder Road. In addition to what everybody knows, there is a creek also that runs along our section of the road. That's why there's a ditch down there, and it joins in with Green Valley Creek, which then crosses Holder Road to join with the James River. Doing blasting and filling in an attempt to widen the road at this point would cause irreparable damage to the Riparian Corridor and its wildlife. There are always unintended consequences to such monumental actions, as was more recently seen with the topsoil mining on the adjoining property to the south. Not only that, but these waters were unquestionably used by the Delaware Indians who lived in the surrounding area. It would be a travesty to make such major changes in an area so rich in history. So there were attempts. Susan discussed the things that she and Janice Markley had discussed with the county about the many things that could be done, which included all the things that the people opposed to us have brought up. Well, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? Why don't you do that? Those things have all been discussed before. At the Clever Library meeting, Miranda explained why those things were not possible to do. But as a result of the Olson safety study, one viable recommendation was to add delineators, which if successful, would be replaced by the landscaped cement median strips. This did slow the traffic, although we don't know how much of effect it would have had on the road as a whole. But basically, the, the driving public was outraged, and some have stated publicly what a stupid idea it was. So, so those are, those are issues with the safety of the road and it not being a viable option to widen the road. Some people also don't seem to realize that, you know, the 60-foot width of highway right-of-ways, it's only 40 feet, and there are no shoulders already. In order to widen the road, property would have to be purchased from the, the landowners all up and down the road. So I do want to address the concerns that people have had. We actually don't want to put up a gate, but we see no alternative at this time, basically because we know that people ignore the road-close signs when the creek is flooded. So we hope it's only temporary. And, but whether or not the gate is needed at all is completely dependent on the compliance of the cut-through traffic. If the cut-through traffic does not go across the road where it says it is private property and no through-traffic, we won't need a gate at all. So it's completely dependent on them. Ryan Virch, the central manager, region manager for Cox Health Emergency Medical Services, has said that it would be no problem having a gate on our property. He said that ambulances from Republic are stationed at various locations in western Christian County and are supposed to vary their locations in that western part of the county, so they're never at the same place all the time. Fire services do need to be considered because of mutual aid agreement among the departments. Clever Fire Department would be able to access Holder Road from either end with no time difference in responding. Secondary assistance from NICSa might have a slight delay getting to the northern end of Holder Road. Secondary assistance from Republic does not need to be delayed to respond at either end. Please see Exhibit 12. Using a mapping utility shows that it is faster by one minute for the Republic Fire Department to use Highway P to Clever, then turning on to 14 to reach the intersection of Holder Road and Highway N rather than using Holder Road. And that's a kind of obvious when you consider that they have to go through a residential section to get over to ZZ. The Republic Fire Chief says that they refill their water tanker trucks at Republic High School, which adds an additional two minutes out in back-of-travel time. However, it would be closer for their tanker trucks to refill at Clever High School or the Clever Fire Station. Surely that would be allowed when supporting a Clever Fire Department. So, you know, basically, just because Holder Road has been used for response doesn't mean that it has to be used, or that it's even the most efficient route. Response from the NICSa Fire Department would be faster than Republic's. To the same intersection at N and Holder, it requires only seven minutes. To go through Holder unimpeded, it takes 11 minutes to get to the other around. If they went around, it would take an additional four minutes. It's only the northern end of Holder Road primarily served by the Clever Fire Department that might be affected by the slower arrival time of NICSa Fire Department, if an inaccessible gate were in place. However, it will be accessible. We believe that the ability for fire departments to respond is negligibly affected. Hobbs and Spence are incorporating other measures to reassure the public. The Republic Fire Chief said that we would need to install a special lock for access. He didn't name the lock, but both Republic and NICSa Fire Departments use KnoxBox products. Please see Exhibit 13. Many properties in, oops, sorry, I didn't keep up. There's two on 12. Go one more. Many properties in Springfield and Christian County use these. Firefighter Casey Perryman, with 10 years of experience, states that to open a gate using a key in a KnoxBox product adds a maximum of 20 seconds. The gate remains disabled, so return trips or additional vehicles do not require opening the gate. If there is a gate failure, the Springfield Department carries a sawzall and bolt cutters, and if all else fails, they can plow through a gate with their trucks. Casey's affidavit, notarized statement, is at the end of the documents folder. Exhibit 14. The mechanism for opening and closing the gate to be used on the Hobbs property will be the same as what is at the Riverbend Estates on Delaware Landing Road. It is easily disabled without a special key or special tools. A cotter pin is removed, and then the pin holding the gate mechanism in place is removed. Please see Exhibit 15. The gate will not be as robust as those shown in the exhibit folders. It will be similar to the one that leads into our barnyard. This gate is not to create a gated community. It is only intended to stop cut-through traffic. We realize that we've promised access through the gate, but people wonder what will happen when we are gone or we sell the property. We promised to stipulate gate access for emergency services and any transfer of property. Nathaniel Hobbs, our son, who is the successor trustee for the trust that holds the Holder Road property, agrees to honor and effectuate any access granted through the property following Christian County's vacating its right-of-way. And his notarized affidavit is in your packet of materials. In summary, county-adopted road safety standards assert that portions of Holder Road are dangerous. These are due to the innate characteristics of the road. The alternate roads are superior. Holder Road is carrying a much greater traffic load than it should. Greater numbers of vehicles using the road compound the safety issues. The less safe conditions existing on Holder Road on a daily basis supersedes a remote possibility of slight delay of fire access by NICSa Fire Departments when other fire departments will also be responding. If safety is a primary concern, then the three extra minutes of travel time on the superior route are well-spent to ensure the safety of both the commuters and the Holder Road residents. And we wonder if, please see Exhibit 16. This is just a random property down in the Hidden Valley area. It takes several minutes longer to get down there for fire, for fire response access from Clever. It takes much longer for NICSa to respond, which is in the next exhibit. And we, you know, did those people, did they, when they bought their property down in that area, did they consider that they were moving three minutes farther away from help than they otherwise might, or that several minutes, more than three minutes for them? We don't believe that people buy property or rent property with that the foremost thing in their mind. How close am I to fire? Delivery vehicles, school buses, and postal routes, please see Exhibit 18. The proposed gate location, one more. That's the NICSa one. The proposed gate location takes advantage of strategic turnaround points and routes that minimize distance traveled. There would be no need to travel from the 1266 property down to the Metzeltines property down at opposite Kerr Road. Some are concerned about diverted traffic. Some are concerned that the cut-through traffic on Holder diverted to the intersection of Highway ZZ and 14 will cause congestion. These are both highways intended to carry heavier traffic. With lessening traffic on Highway 14 as it moves westward from NICSa, the cross-traffic already is currently less at Highway ZZ than at Holder Road. There should be less concern about traffic issues at the intersection of two highways than traffic issues at the intersection with the residential Holder Road, which is narrower and has no shoulders. Another Olson-recognized dangerous curve is near the corner of Holder as it approaches ZZ. Diverting traffic to highways 14 and ZZ would diminish the need for navigating that other curve for people entering onto ZZ. Some are concerned that traffic will be diverted to Kerr Road. We do not see that this is likely. We do not see that this is likely. Exhibit 19, please. It is true that when the low-water bridge is impassable, that people will sometimes turn around and drive down Kerr Road, but, but it takes eleven minutes longer to go that way. It would be, if they haven't already gone down Holder Road and met up with the low-water, the low-water bridge being too high, they won't be going down there at all if they, if, you know, under a permanent, under permanent conditions. It is said that we are selfish towards our neighbors and we are acting entitled, and we ask which neighbors? We may not be doing with the neighbors in opposition south of Highway fourteen want, but our petition serves to benefit our immediate neighbors, the neighborhood of Holder Road, the vast majority of whom signed the petition to vacate. The hundreds of thousands of cars traveling through the middle of our property every year, inhibiting our use of it, has been a hardship. The road is on our private property. It would seem that it is the opposition who are behaving in an entitled fashion. They want to preserve their three-minute shortcut at our expense. Using Holder Road is a necessity for its residents. It's merely a convenience for the cut-through traffic. No one is entitled to a convenience. Four of the, four of the households on our road with no prompting from us have stated that they would not care whether they were granted access through the gate or not. They would just go around. They recognize the problems discussed here and are willing to travel the extra time to alleviate the road problems by closing it to through traffic. The decision whether or not to vacate a portion of Holder Road cannot depend on numbers of people for or against. It must be made on the objective facts of the matter. The vacation of Holder Road meets the statutory requirements and provides the best long-term solution for the safety of everyone.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your testimony. How much time do we have left?
Two minutes.
They're done. Okay. All right. So, we now will, and that's, we will now go ahead and have the remonstrators.
Make sure you get a record that you received Exhibits one through nineteen.
I've marked the handouts they gave me as Exhibit two and three. And what did you say?
I think they've labeled it as Exhibits, Petitioners Exhibits, one through nineteen.
One through nineteen.
That's the whole thing. I do see what you say.
Okay.
The volumes could be considered separate exhibits on their own, in subparts.
I'm just making sure she's got a record of what you.
Yeah. I'll do both. I'm gonna list one through nineteen and I've got two and three. Okay?
Is there any other petition?
No.
Okay. So, make a record of that.
Okay. We'll make a record of, of one through nineteen, which I call two and three. Okay? All right. Thank you. So, we'll, we'll.
I have some questions.
Okay. Okay. We have now, thank, thank you all very much. That was very timely. We've, we've spent our time. Now, we're gonna go to the remonstrators and who is speaking first? Mr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mike Bridges.
Thank you. Mike Bridges. I represent the remonstrants in this case. Before doing anything else, I did want to compliment everyone who's been involved in this process, from commissioners, staff, people, petitioners, remonstrants. In my view, this is democracy at work and at a local level, you know, it requires personal commitment of resources and time and I compliment each and every one of you. The mission of the Christian County Commission is to, quote, "improve and enrich the lives of all Christian County citizens." Or as the preamble to the Constitution states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution." Whether described as improving and enriching the lives of all citizens or promoting the general welfare, the role, the role of government in the United States, from the federal system to local political subdivisions, has always been to advance the common good over narrow self-interests. As I trust will become clear from our speakers, vacating Holder Road as requested would benefit a limited number of residents of the county. A limited number of residents of Lincoln Township, in fact. By contrast, the negative impact on the vast majority of the other residents in Lincoln Township and beyond would be significant. In other words, the benefits to all citizens of leaving Holder Road open far exceed the limited benefits that may be provided to a limited few. Vacating the road would impair emergency services. It would negatively affect the bus routes of the Sparta School District and lengthen the travel time for parents in the area. It would force all residents, particularly elderly folks going to medical appointments and other appointments they may have, to travel out of their way. Folks going to and from jobs would be going out of their way. Folks attending various events in the area would be going out of their way. Undoubtedly, will be a debate about precisely how many minutes more it would be required. But I think the issue ultimately is whether or not the commission has a mandate to protect the property entrance, interests of a limited number of folks along either side of this road, whose predecessor and interest did dedicate and grant that perpetual easement to the county for use of that road. I think you will hear from some of the speakers that the alternative routes, Kerr Road or ZZ and fourteen, are not appropriate or adequate alternatives. I'm not gonna spend a lot more time here at the beginning. We've got a number of speakers lined up this morning. I would request that the exhibit booklets that I've provided, I think it includes sixteen exhibits that have to be admitted into evidence. And with that, I would like to call our first speaker, Joe Nelson.
Okay. And before we, I wanna make sure we get those exhibits. So, what did you say, Exhibits what?
Uh, one through sixteen, but if you're following your protocol, maybe it would be Exhibit three.
Yeah. We'll do Exhibit four. I've got two and three, so we can get out. So, this will be Exhibit four.
They'll be shown as admitted. And they will be shown as admitted on record.
As admitted and submitted as Exhibit four.
Honorable members of the Christian County Commission, my name is Joe Nelson. At one time, I sat in the chair on the right and later the center chair. So, I know that from time to time, and I don't wanna share that out of nostalgia, just a fact of who I am, who I was. But to emphasize that is irrelevant. Perhaps I know better than most that are here, the difficult decisions that you fellows have to take, make from time to time. I believe that the matter before you today isn't one of those difficult decisions that you have to make. It's actually quite clear. Now, to the issue of actual Holder Road. Roads were built to be maintained by whatever entity it might be, whether it be a special road district as in years past in Christian County, or whether it's state highways. Every road is meant to be upgraded from time to time as is, as is needed. Does Holder Road have a legal deed? Probably not. Not, excuse me, not many longstanding roads throughout Christian County don't have deeds on them either. That fact alone cannot determine whether, whether a public road should remain open. The real question is, has county invested public tax dollars into the maintenance and improvement of this road over the years? If the answer is yes, and I know it is, then Holder Road is a public asset that serves a broader population and deserves to remain old, open. Closing it would only serve a few at the expense of many. And I've had people come before me as I sat in your position wanting different things. Speed bumps on my road because they drive too fast on it. Understandable. I live on a county road. My property is on both sides of the road. I know the traffic on my road is tremendously more than it was a few years back. When I first took Commissioner, took the job as Commissioner in nineteen ninety, the north half of Holder Road was a dirt surface. Around nineteen ninety-two or three, residents of that area asked about getting it paved. And I, in reference to Ms. Spence, it was I, not Commissioner Barnett at that time, was wanting it paved. And I said, yes, it will be, the county will pave that, but you have to contribute, which was the custom at that time. I don't know how much that's changed over the years. At that time, each property owner had to commit four hundred dollars toward the improvement of that, of that road. And they wanted it blacktopped. They raised the money and I blacktopped it, or the county commission blacktopped it. Today, Holder Road is not a forgotten county road. It connects two major intersections. Highway ZZ to Highway fourteen and serves a vital link for local residents and through traffic alike. According to the county's recent traffic survey, approximately sixteen hundred vehicles travel it daily. That level of use underscores its, its public value. To close road now would be to erase decades of public investment and inconvenience to hundreds, if not thousands, for the benefit of a few. This simply just doesn't add up. As I said at the beginning, I understand hard decisions, but this isn't one of them. Keep Holder Road open. I thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir.
I believe our next speaker is Herb Lundey.
Honorable Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name is Herb Lundey. My wife and I, Mary Beth, live in NIXA. Our son and his family live on Holder Road. My comments today will be my own. My son lives down there and he's trying real hard to remain neutral on this issue. I have driven Holder Road almost every day, sometimes multiple times per day, for close to ten years. I drove Holder Road this morning, well before daylight, well before a lot of you got up. I can tell you that today, the condition of Holder Road is not very good. Couple of stories. I once drove down to the low-water bridge to do a good deed. Water was up. A bunch of logs had wrapped it up on one side. I put on my knee boots, waded out into the current, and I was floating logs across. Well, my foot slipped. Both feet shot straight up into the air. I landed on my bottom and ended up smack dab in the creek. There's more to that story. And if Susan Spence is smiling over there, it's because she knows the rest of the story. Susan was very helpful to me. Because during that athletic spiral into a belly flop in the creek, I lost my phone. And if anybody here has ever lost a phone, you know how, what a sick feeling that is. I went down to that creek every day. I looked in the creek. I looked around the creek. I looked everywhere. Days and days and days later, we were at my son's house. Doorbell rang. I went to the door and there's Susan and two dogs and my phone. They found him in a debris pile down by the bridge. Susan refused anything for herself, but her dogs are probably still wondering where all that premium dog food and dog treats came from. I was driving down Holder Road another time. Drove across the bridge, round that sharp curve, and there it was. Big old black car wrecked off the road, down in the trees. I dialed nine-one-one. A state trooper came. There was nobody in the car, so the trooper and I cleaned up automobile parts off the road. We'll get back to all that. Some good people, the Hobbs, the Markleys, Susan Spence, others, have petitioned the county to vacate a section of Holder Road. If approved, that means the entire road will be essentially useless to the great majority of people using it now. On the other hand, more than one thousand five hundred people, good people, our statistician will tell me it's more than two thousand, may very well be, have put their names, their voices, their time, their effort, their money on the line to object to this petition. Holder Road is not a private lane. It is a publicly funded road that allows many people to use it for a great variety of reasons that are important to them. Now, I hear that speed is a central issue. I'm not gonna deny there have been speeders down there. I haven't seen any lately. Nothing wild, certainly. And if anybody here has gained the impression that Holder Road is nothing more than a NASCAR Speedway, well, it's simply not true. But if we're gonna close Holder Road for speed, then we need to close every county road in Christian County. As a matter of fact, if we're gonna start closing roads for speed, we can close every highway and byway in the state of Missouri. If speed is an issue, then we need to be looking for speed solutions, not closing roads. I believe the Christian County Highway Department has impressive, comprehensive plans, ready to go. And I think the resource is to execute those plans. Plans that include putting a box culvert on that low-water bridge, from non-county sources, I think. Plans to remove all those big trees close to both sides of the road. Trees that have been marked for removal for a long time. Plans to widen those dangerous curves. Plans to pave Holder Road from fourteen to ZZ. And, and aside here, I hope it includes either marking or fixing that right-hand turn off of Holder onto ZZ, where so many people have dropped a wheel off the road into the ditch. To be fair, I think that's a MODOT issue and Miranda has told them about it. And there are other elements to the plan that will make the road better and safer for everybody. Everybody on the petitioning group, everybody in the say no group, and anybody else in between. So, what do we do now? Well, I propose- Well, I propose that somebody in authority simply go to the Christian County Highway Department, review their plans as necessary, and turn them loose.
Thank you for your testimony.
Pardon my delay. Our next speaker will be Dwayne Patterson.
I want to thank you all for having me in the opportunity to speak my input on this hearing and everything. My name is Dwayne Patterson. I'm ABC owner of ABC Garage Door Services and Supplies in Nixa, Missouri. We service a large area around Christian County and several other counties and towns and stuff. And we've been traveling this road for a lot of years and stuff like that. I've waved at Susan and some of them walking their dogs and stuff like that. I've done business with Steve. These people are not my enemy. You know, the convenience, and it was called convenience, of this road does play into my business as far as us being able to get to people in timely manners, stuff like that. And let's see, I'm not reading my paper at all here, so let me kind of catch up with myself. I'm not a big public speaker, so, but I do, I have several employees and we do utilize that road. As far as I know, I used to run trackers on my vehicles and stuff like that to keep my people from speeding and would be awareness of that. So we try to be courteous to the community that we serve, you know? So the issue at hand here is whether it's more important for us to inconvenience a few that feel inconvenienced, or the many of us that use, utilize that road. Now, I've been going across that road for at least forty years of my life. I used to live in Republic. I transferred, my parents lived in Nixa, and I transferred through there. Obviously, it's a, it's a much better route. Whereas I think ZZ is a very, a dangerous road, even though it is built for, to carry traffic at a higher speed, the corners and, and the way it drops off over the hills and stuff like that, I, I personally think is a lot more dangerous. I drive about forty-five mile an hour on ZZ Highway because of the deer, because of Wilson Creek, because of all the things that contribute to your neighborhood, you know, or, and so, I mean, I bought a brand new truck here a while back, and the first thing my wife did was tap a doe, you know? So it's like, oh, my gosh, you know, slow down, because, you know, there are a lot of obstacles out there. Let's see. I, I recently here a few years ago, got a reduction in property tax. I live on Willoughby Road, you know? We do see stuff dumped down there, just east of Willoughby Farm and stuff like that. As a neighborhood, we clean it up, you know? But let's see, recently, they added a pond on Willoughby Road over there for their fire station to fill their pumper trucks up and stuff up. I saw a decrease in my insurance, my homeowner's insurance, because of the accessibility of that. You know, at the same time, we're talking about hindering people, emergency vehicles and stuff like that, getting to our neighborhoods because it's an inconvenience for dog walkers and stuff. And I am a dog lover. I seem to wind up with every rescue dog you can get, you know? So, but anyway, I don't have a lot more to say, other than the fact that I do live in the Boaz area. I do travel that road regularly. I like to take my old fifty-seven Chevy and cut through there and maybe go to a car show or something like, because it's kind of nostalgic, you know? It's beautiful land through there, the road is. You cross a creek, creek down there, it's kind of a tunnel of trees and stuff like that. I don't see, you know, anybody could speed around that corner or up to the Hobbs's residence because there's not enough road there to speed, you know? So I'm not saying the capabilities are not there of people, but it doesn't seem like it would be a major issue, you know? The two straight stretches where they put the de-lanators and stuff like that, that's a little bit of a straight stretch, you know? I've never really noticed a lot of speeding going on there. But anyway, I guess that's about all I got to say. Again, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next on our list is Gary Thader.
Thader.
Thader, okay.
T-H-A-T-E-R.
Okay.
My name is Gary Thader. I'm a longtime resident and one of the owner operators of Thader Farms, which sits between ZZ and Holder Road. I am writing today to respectfully express my strong opposition to the proposed closure of Holder Road to public access. Our family farm spans several hundred acres and supports a significant hay and beef cattle operation. We go, we grow premium alfalfa and orchard grass, which we bale and sell locally, and we raise and market several hundred head of cattle. Each year, as part of our daily and seasonal operations, we rely on both Highway ZZ and Holder Road for safe and efficient movement of large equipment, hay, livestock trailers, and deliveries. If Holder Road is closed and gated, the result would significantly impact our ability to operate smoothly. All farm traffic would be forced onto Highway ZZ, creating a greater safety risk and causing unnecessary congestion, especially during planting, hay, and cattle moving season. Our equipment is large, slow-moving, and often requires wide turning radiuses. Maneuvering this safely on a single busier road would be extremely challenging and dangerous, not only for us, but for other drivers in the area. Holder Road provides essential access to both sides of our property. It is not just a convenience, it is a critical infrastructure component that supports our operations' efficiency and safety. Closing it would force us to drive equipment longer distances on busier roads and limit emergency access should there ever be an issue on the property. We understand and respect that neighbors may have concerns, but closing a public road that serves multiple landowners, farm operations should not be taken lightly. This decision affects more than just a few. It impacts the broader agricultural community and the daily function of our local food supply. I respectfully ask that you consider the impact this will have on our farm, our family, and our ability to operate safely and efficiently. We are asking that Holder Road remain open to the public and accessible to those of us who depend on it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony.
Can I adjust the order of our witnesses a little bit and ask Amanda Ginter to approach? And if I can ask the indulgence of the commission and personnel, I think she may have some discussions or questions with the county road commissioner.
They, they said that wasn't allowed. Cross-examination wasn't allowed.
Yeah, it's not really cross-examination.
Yeah. Okay. Good morning, commissioners, Amanda Ginter. Sorry. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Amanda Ginter, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here on behalf of myself and the thousands who have voiced their strong support to keep Holder Road open as a public through road. We are here not just with opinions, but with facts, history, and overwhelmingly community support. The requested petition to close the section of Holder Road is not about safety, infrastructure, or necessity. It's about their personal preference. What we have is community support, a pending FEMA grant for the low-water crossing improvements, and pending improvements from the road study. The road classification, Miranda, Christian County is, does road classifications through what organization?
The, the adopted classifications we have are within the Ozarks Transportation Organization Boundary. Everything outside of that boundary is not formally, the classifications have not been formally adopted.
Yes, okay. So road classification, if classified, Holder Road would fall under a collector road, correct, Miranda?
Yes.
Okay. A road designed to connect local streets to arterial routes and typically handles between fifteen hundred and eight thousand vehicles per day, which is what the road study showed. This is Holder Road. By law, classification cannot be used to restrict traffic. All decisions about road status must be based on actual usage and safety data, which brings us to the Holder Road safety audit. And I believe they all have the summary of that. In October of two thousand twenty-three, Olson, under commissioned by MoDOT, conducted a full safety audit of Holder Road. At the time of the study, the road, Holder Road, had no posted speed limit or signage. Despite this, the average speed was documented through that study at thirty-eight point four miles per hour going northbound and thirty-eight miles per hour going southbound. Clearly, speed is not the problem. Traffic counts showed daily usage over sixteen hundred vehicles. It's pretty remarkable for that many vehicles to be on the road, not knowing that they were being watched, studied, documented, data gathered, and nobody was speeding with no signs posted. Heavy vehicle traffic, that's been mentioned, which includes, heavy vehicle traffic includes in that report, it's all detailed in the documents that you have, that includes trash trucks, propane trucks, school buses, and of course, your semis. All of that was within normal, safe ranges, between the five percent and eleven and a half percent, depending on the location. The accidents and safety, that was also mentioned, they did a three-year back study on that with Olson. Olson also performed the three-year crash analysis on that. There were sixteen incidents reviewed. Six of those did not occur on Holder Road. They were included only due to their proximity. That means in three years, three years, there was only ten incidents slash accidents that occurred on Holder Road. Of those, two were ice-related at the low-water crossing. Six were failure to negotiate the curbs. One involved alcohol, and one was a distracted driver. Again, these statistics and data are no different than any other county road. I'm not going to stand here and prove that and pull and talk about it, but the data is there, and it's easy to find, and it's easy to look at. There was no indication on this report of a pattern of danger, no pattern of excessive speeding, and no major safety threats. Are there concerns? Yes. There is no major safety threats on that road. The recommendations that Olson did make, and that have been made since then, was to improve safety by possibly adding guard rails on the curbs, widening the road, placing proper signage such as curb warnings, and marking center lines on the road. These are all reasonable upgrades, already in progress, thanks to Miranda's dedication to securing funds and to the FEMA grant for the low-water crossing. These are not reasons to close a public road. If a section of Holder Road were vacated, traffic would be forced to reroute primarily onto fourteen and ZZ. As maps show, yes, if you vacate Holder Road, the only other, there's only, other than Kerr being a dirt gravel road, is to take fourteen to ZZ. That would be where your sixteen hundred-plus cars would redirect to. That intersection is already known to be dangerous. If you look at the data, you will see the numbers. In just the past three months, there have been three accidents at that location. Now imagine what happens if we reroute over sixteen hundred vehicles per day through that same spot. We wouldn't just be closing a road, we'd be increasing risk elsewhere and putting more strain on an already unsafe intersection. Commissioners, we want to leave you with this final thought. The request to close this section of Holder Road is based on want, not need. There is a major difference between someone wanting a road closed for personal convenience and needing a road closed for safety or infrastructure reasons. There is no data to support the need for this road to be closed. There is no documented serious danger and no widespread issues. On the other hand, there is a large community that, yes, uses this road daily and depends on it for access, travel, and connection. It's a road. That's what it's supposed to be used for. That is what taxes pay for. Your role as commissioners is to protect the public interest, and the public interest clearly supports keeping Holder Road open. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony.
Before our next witness, I wanted to see if I could get added to the red record as exhibit seventeen, the Olson report. It may already be for the petitioners exhibits, but I wanted to add that. That's what Amanda just referred to.
Okay, we will add the Olson report.
Can I approach?
Yeah.
Our next witness is Amanda Satterly.
My name is Amanda Jones Satterly. And Harry and Bertha Holder were my great-grandparents. So I'm very familiar with this road and the farm. And honestly, first of all, I want to thank you, Susan, for your story about going and sitting with him. I love to hear that. I was twelve years old when he passed. So while I got to hear many, many stories, I always love to hear them. And I want to thank the Hobbs family for keeping the farm in such good shape. So it's still, my brother drove through there not that long ago, and he told me, he's like, I was surprised it was still standing. So I do want to thank you all for that. In saying that, my grandmother, Billy Jane Holder Jones, grew up on that farm. She married my grandfather, Darrell Jones, and they were the second generation, along with my other great-grandparents, that had the grocery store in Clever, Missouri. So they used to give credit in their store, you know? They would literally trade for chickens at some points, or, you know, it's, things have changed, unfortunately. But one thing that they taught me more than anything is they believe in progress. They want to see things continue to grow. Growth is good. If you are not growing, you're dying. So in saying that, Christian County has been one of the top-growing counties for twenty-five years in Missouri. Both sets of my grandparents graduated from clever schools shortly after it was built. My parents, myself, and my husband, and my son, all graduated. So it's five generations of. So, it's five generations of us there. Now, my in-laws have a very large family there. So, and my mother-in-law lives on Shuba. And Shuba is a crazy busy county road. And so, she literally, she walks around her house to get her exercise. So, I mean, there's things that we unfortunately have to do as progress comes. I'm also a real estate agent. So, in saying that, we had mentioned that that will impact negatively the selling value of a lot of the things that are south of N Highway, because Holder Road is a main thorough, is a thorough through. By adding a longer commute, you are also cutting out those medical personnels that have twenty to thirty minutes. By that extra three to five minutes, that could also make or break whether they can purchase a property south of Highway fourteen. So, that is something to note. We're already kind of limited to who can, in that, in that kind of profession, who can live there. What it would not negatively affect, though, would be for the people that would be having, on Holder Road with the gates. That would technically put it as a gated community, which would add to the value of their homes and property, while it negatively affects a majority of the land south of Highway fourteen. And as a real estate agent, I know that, and I know it's different than when you all purchased your land now. I know everything's different. But all parties have to sign off on an easement when they purchase a property, whether it's a road easement or an electrical easement. That is all given to them on a form and they look at it and they, they have to initial that form. So, this is, this is known information before purchasing the property. I am also, I was, for the last seven years, I had been the Director or President of the Clever Chamber of Commerce and it was C C B A before we made it the Chamber in two thousand twenty. So, I have been fighting for the clever area for at least ten years and trying to get attention over there from the rest of the county. And I know, you know, Lynn, you and I and Johnny, we've all talked and I know you guys are listening now. And I'm very, very, very proud of that fact. So, we want to just continue that and to keep growing. Clever and Nixa are going to continue to grow together in the years to come. We want businesses to come to Christian County along Highway fourteen. That's going to start going towards N Highway. It's going to start making, making its way that way as we grow. By closing this road, that takes out a lot. It takes away from Nixa, honestly. For people commuting, if they're coming home and they can only take ZZ that way, they're not going to head towards Nixa. And honestly, most people in this vicinity tend to avoid driving through Nixa, just getting, you know, from Springfield, getting down one sixty, we all know how that is. So, it's very difficult. That's why people tend to take Highway ZZ to Holder. And in saying that, Lynn, you and I have talked many, many times about wanting to keep our tax dollars in Christian County. Well, we're going to be sending them to Republic because they're going to be coming through that way and it's quicker and it's easier. So, that's something that, you know, it would be nice to avoid that. Bear with me, I go quick sometimes and sometimes I lose my train of thought, so. It's going to push the flow of traffic toward, like I said, towards Republic, but it's also going to be pushing it towards the intersection of fourteen and Highway ZZ. And I have been told for as long as I can remember, we're about one fatal crash away from having a roundabout put in there, which we know. So, what happens to traffic when that is being built? There is no place for anybody to go except P Highway or Highway fourteen. There's no way around. And there are several roads in the county that are much more dangerous. I've driven Holder Road since, well, since I turned sixteen and, you know, since I was a baby before that. And, you know, we have Metzeltine, Shuba, Willoughby, Jasmine, you know, those are just to name a very few, where there are flat, straight stretches and people fly down those. Now, this road, and I, like I said, I've driven it so many times, you actually have to slow down and take your time. And it's, I know, it's a beautiful drive and I know that you love it and I love it too, so I totally understand. And really, I agree that something needs to be done about Holder Road. I agree wholeheartedly with that. Something needs to be done to help the flow of traffic because as far as progress go, we're only growing. So, whether that be the county working with the state to see what we can do to get something, you know, better, it may be a different route. It may be something else, but something needs to happen to where we can make something go from Highway ZZ to N Highway. So, like I said, I'm not sure how that even works. I know Miranda's like, I get you, I know, but, and our hands are tied a lot, but it's something that's definitely something that, you know, maybe Christian County and MoDOT can sit down and really try to work something out and get another state highway through there, because it's only going to continue to grow and we're going to need it. But vacating it, that's not it. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Our next witness is Ronnie Keithley.
Hi, my name is Ronnie Keithley. I'm the Fire Chief in Clever. This letter is to inform you that we are not in favor of closing Holder Road. I have read the petition filed with your office and there are issues that have not been considered and misinformation given. I understand that this road is narrow and has a low-water crossing that closes the road at times. The fire department uses this roadway as a cut-through to ZZ Highway from our Boas Station. This saves several minutes on our response time. We also utilize Republic Fire and Brookline Fire that uses this road to get to the eastern side of our district. Just for one example, on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, we had a structure fire out by the Hidden Valley Golf Course that we utilized this road for both Brookline and Republic to lend mutual aid. Their extra five to ten-minute response time could have caused us to run out of water to fight fire. I would rather see this roadway widened and a low-water slab reworked to allow safer gravel down this road. As the petition states, this roadway is an extreme, is an extremely popular road that is frequently traveled. I feel that closing this road would cause more issues and concerns than it would be solving. In conclusion, I am opposed to this road being, being closed due to the importance of emergency response. I have also been in contact with our neighboring departments that we use for mutual aid and they are also opposed. So, I ask that you, you look at the good that this roadway brings to the county and residents. I would ask that you move forward with your previous plans for fixing the low-water slab to make this road safer. Thank you for the job that you do as the Commissioners. Thank you for the time in letting me grade this letter. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. And one other point I want to make, I want to see a gate be opened in twenty seconds from getting out of the truck to unlocking the gate to getting back in the truck. I want to see it. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Our next witness is Jared King.
Good morning. Stand before you today as a concerned citizen to advocate for keeping Holder Road open, to serve our community as it has faithfully done for several years. This is not merely about maintaining a stretch of pavement. This is about preserving a vital lifeline that connects our community and ensures the safety and well-being of not only Christian County residents, but residents throughout the area. Holder Road serves as a critical artery for our first responders. You've already heard from Chief Keithley. It, it also serves as a, as a route for our Sheriff's Department. I, I know they patrol that area, I've seen them there. When officers receive a call about a domestic disturbance, a break-in, or any emergency requiring immediate law enforcement presence, every minute saved in response time can mean the difference between preventing a crime and arriving too late. Our ambulance district equally depends on Holder Road for timely access to residents who may need life-saving medical care. Consider the elderly resident having a heart attack or the child experiencing a severe allergic reaction. Paramedics know these roads, they've planned their routes and they depend on reliable access to reach these families quickly. Closing this road would force detours that could add precious minutes to response times, minutes that could mean the difference between life and death. Beyond emergency services, Holder Road enables essential daily services that our residents have come to rely upon. Mail carriers traverse this route daily, serving families and businesses along the corridor, not only the postal service, but trash services and, and other, other needs that, that, that all of our residents have. Many of our neighbors, particularly elderly residents, depend upon prompt delivery of medications, healthcare products, and other essential services. Utility workers also use this road regularly for maintenance and emergency repairs. Just last week, when power lines went down during the storm, crews were needed to be dispatched in, in reliable and quick-access manner to serve the residents and, and quickly and efficiently restore power for the area. For years, Christian County taxpayers have funded the construction, maintenance, and upkeep of Holder Road through their hard-earned tax dollars. This represents a substantial public investment in infrastructure that has served our community well. Road maintenance, snow removal, pothole repairs, and general upkeep, all funded by the very people who depend on this road remaining open. Residents and businesses who depend on Holder Road have built their lives around this access. Families purchased homes here, businesses established operations, property owners made significant investments based on the reasonable established operations of, and access of this roadway. Property owners pay taxes based partly on their road access and removing that access without compensation undermines both property values and basic fairness. These are your constituents, people who vote, pay taxes, work hard, and contribute daily to our community's economic vitality and social fabric. They deserve to have their reasonable expectations of continued public road access honored by their elected representatives. Closing Holder Road would also create broader economic consequences, as some of the previous witnesses have, have stated. Businesses that rely on this route for deliveries, customers, employee access would face increased costs and potential loss of business. Emergency service delays could impact insurance rates for the entire area. Property values along the affected corridor would likely decline, reducing the county's tax base. I would urge you to maintain Holder Road as a public thoroughfare that it has been for a number of generations. Continue the reasonable stewardship of taxpayer resources by keeping this vital connection open and properly maintained. Consider the voices of the families who depend on this road, the first responders who need efficient access routes, and our other public services and utility crews who serve our community daily. This Commission has a responsibility to preserve essential infrastructure that serves the public good. Holder Road is exactly that, essential infrastructure that connects our community, enables vital services, and represents years of taxpayer investment. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service to our community, thank you for your careful consideration of this important matter.
Thank you for your testimony.
Can I confirm how much time?
How much time do we have?
We wrote it down when you started.
The clock just stopped working.
It's dead, but we wrote down when you guys started. And so, it was.
I've got you at eight minutes, twenty-two seconds.
Left?
Yep.
So, I have five more folks. That's whatever, a minute and a half a piece. Should we cut some of those or will you extend that time?
No, we, we, we can't extend the time, so, either, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to call Marshall Lawrence.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. I want to just allude to closing Holder Road would set a precedence which would tie up the county's time and resources for years. Several people have told me this, if this road is closed, they'll be looking to close other county roads. A lot of time, excuse me, a lot of this is in jest, but some individuals are serious, including an elected official who works in Jefferson City. With only twelve signatures needed to petition for a road closure, this could become a fiasco. We, our group, have worked to get the message out to keep Holder open. We've collected signatures for three types of petitions. The remonstrance petition has twenty-five names on it. The supporting petition for residents of Lincoln Township has four hundred and fourteen names on it. Do you know how long it took us to get those four hundred and fourteen names? Ten hours. I don't know if you ever collected petitions, but it takes a long time to get that kind of, more than ten hours. Anyhow, we also have, oh, older folks came, some in their nineties, disabled people. Young people came on Saturdays to sign our opposing petition. We have fifteen hundred and seventy-seven names on the online petition, two hundred and thirteen total names. There are over two hundred members on our Facebook group. We did this in a hundred and twelve days. This speaks to the passion and the need to keep this vital road open to the public. As Mr. Nelson stated earlier, this should not be a hard decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I think we had four others. Does anyone make, want to make any final statements? If not, I will close. I first wanted to correct myself. I think I made reference earlier to the Sparta School District. I meant to say the Clever School District. And I think you've got a letter from this Clever School District in the exhibits that we provided. I won't belabor the point. All of these speakers have eloquently pointed out that this is a, a road, not just of convenience, but a road that's vital to people in the area, not just along the roadway, but on either end and throughout the county. I agree with the concerns expressed, the need to ensure that this roadway is properly maintained, improved over time, particularly when federal funds or other outside funds are available. But to relinquish an asset, as Mr. Nelson referred to it, that has been an asset of the county for decades, that has already received a considerable amount of investment, public resources, would set a precedent that would not be in the best interests of the county generally and the citizens in and near Lincoln Township. So, with that, I know that the Commission has preserved an hour for itself. We are open to any questions, follow-up issues that you may want to discuss. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Bridges. Okay, so that ends the second part. We'll go ahead and, and we have our Sheriff Brad Cole is going to be our first witness. We're going to let him make some statements.
Good morning. Just have some brief things to say here. Holder Road is a, a main access point for emergency.
We need to add your letter that you gave to the...
Okay.
Could this be number eighteen?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Why don't you just...why don't you call that commission? Because we did it.
Eighteen was the number he stated.
I thought the remonstrance was seventeen.
You can just call commissions.
Let's call commissions, he's in the network.
Because everybody's using numbers.
Okay.
That way we're not...
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
That's...thank you, thank you.
Are you ready?
Right.
Okay. As you know, Holder Road is a main access point for emergency units responding to calls for service on Holder Road and residents north of Holder Road, including but not limited to State Highway ZZ, Maples Lane, Hard Rock Lane, Wilson Road, Terrell Road, Blackstone Drive, Double Springs Road, County Line Road, Liberty Hills, and many other roadways, county roads in that area. With the Sheriff's Office, Christian County is broken down into four zones for patrol purposes, with Holder Road being what we classify as our Zone One. All other zones in the county, including the Sheriff's Office, all NIXA fire stations, all Christian County Ambulance District locations are all east of Zone One. And to give you an idea, when I say Zone One, just east of Indian Highway, basically imaginary line, north and south, that is Zone One, everything to the west. From our point, restricting access to Holder Road and eliminating the through-traffic would extend emergency response times for most calls for service in that immediate area. As of now, the residents on Holder Road north of Kerr Road would get a deputy response from State Highway fourteen in approximately three minutes. That is virtually a one-and-a-half-mile stretch of roadway, Holder Road. I've heard previously it would only add three minutes to the drive. Holder Road is about a mile and a half long. Going west of ZZ Highway and driving to the north side of Holder Road is nine-point-two miles. I can drive pretty fast, but I don't believe I can drive another eight miles in three minutes. So the response time would increase significantly to eleven minutes. That's eight minutes time difference in responding to the north side of Holder Road. Deputies also use Holder Road to respond to residents north of Holder Road. For example, the current response time for a deputy responding to a call on Terrell Valley Road near Liberty or Gardenia Lane in that area from Highway fourteen is approximately eleven minutes as it stands traveling across Holder Road. Response times would increase to approximately eighteen minutes, another seven-minute response Additionally, emergency services, school buses, you've heard, utility services, you've already heard, responding to the area would have additional problems turning around on Holder Road because of the dead end. Creating dead-end roads has the potential to generate concerns of theft and additional property crimes in the areas as well. Through-traffic and frequent through-patrols movement is key to deter criminal activity. I want to give you a few quick stats here, real quick. Calls for service on Holder Road for the Sheriff's Office and north of Holder Road near the immediate area of State Highway ZZ in 2024 were forty-eight calls for service in that time period. As of June thirtieth, the 2025, from the first day of this year, we responded to twenty-nine calls in that area. Some of those calls include 911 abandoned calls, two fires, one being a residential house fire that we assisted the fire department with, one was a farm field on fire, nine alarm calls, including panic alarms at homes, one agency assist with medical emergency was involving a one-year-old not breathing, five domestic assaults in that immediate area, one common assault, many harassment and threats calls, three of those, and three motor vehicle crashes. In addition, deputies have completed several extra patrols and traffic stops in the area to help improve safety for the area. From January of 2024 to the end of 2024, the Sheriff's Office had completed ninety-four extra patrols related to Holder Road and conducted eighty-one traffic stops on Holder Road in that immediate area. To put that into perspective for you, when I say ninety-four extra patrols, that's outside of the patrols of a deputy just driving through the area. An extra patrol consists of a prolonged amount of time that a deputy's in the area, more than fifteen minutes. I want to clarify something I heard earlier that was said, and before I do that, I want to make this point as well. I'm sympathetic to the landowners in that area. I too live on a similar county road between Nixon and Ozark, a lot of cut-through traffic. I knew that when I bought the property several years ago. I knew that it would only increase with population. So I'm sympathetic with that, and I understand what the property owners have told you today. But I don't believe that what you have heard from those property owners takes away from the necessity to make sure that we protect the citizens that we serve and make sure that they have the quickest response and the best ability to save lives in these situations. And I'll give you a quick example related to two months ago. This county road that I live on, currently the bridge is out on one end that they're repairing and putting back in. It is closed. You cannot get through from the east side. You have to go all the way around to NIXA to get in. I got a phone call that my neighbor was having a heart attack. I was in Ozark. I responded lights and siren to get there as quickly as I could to help provide aid. I had to go all the way around to NIXA, which took four extra minutes to get there compared to what it would have had I been able to go the other way if the bridge wasn't out. Unfortunately, the neighbor did not survive. I do believe that if I would have been able to get there that four extra minutes and provide CPR, there's a great possibility that my neighbor would still be alive. I tell you that for the obvious reasons. As you've heard, not only minutes save lives, seconds save lives. I'll go back to what I told you earlier, the one-year-old not breathing. I can tell you that a deputy was there faster than the ambulance, and if the deputy had not got there, this child may not have survived. There was testimony earlier that, from one of the witnesses, that they were told that the sheriff said that they...there would be no extra coverage, no extra enforcement, however it was stated, they were told that. I want to make it clear, that person that said that has never talked to me about this, and I have never said that to them. Holder Road has received more patrol and more attention from the Sheriff's Office than any other county road in the county, period, since I've been the sheriff. There is no other county road that's had more targeted direct enforcement than Holder Road, to include myself. I've wrote many speeding tickets out there. Speed is a problem. On Holder Road, it's a problem on every road, as you've heard earlier. We enforce the traffic laws on these county roads to the best of our ability, and we work with the Highway Patrol very closely in these targeted areas to let them know of the problems as well, and they dedicate what they can as well. That is all I have for you today, unless you have questions of me.
Any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Do we have anyone else from the county area that wants to...
I called Lloyd Wallace from...
Oh, yeah, Lloyd, okay, yes, I couldn't see back there. Yes.
Lloyd Wallace, Chief of the NIXA Fire Protection District. I have a letter to read that I previously provided to the commissioners, but I want to address a couple of points before I do that, so I don't forget. One of the points about installing a gate on this roadway and the favor or preference being to allow emergency responders to use the gate. We all know that if the portion of the roadway is vacated, there would be no county maintenance provided, and I think we all also could agree that it wouldn't take very many flood issues for the road to quickly become unusable, unpassable. We're not going to drive our fire apparatus on a road that may equate to washed-out, rutted-out, those kind of things in a roadway that would quickly come into a state of disrepair. The other point that I want to make on that, we do provide mutual aid back and forth with Clever, Brookline, Republic, and there's a great benefit to all of our communities and a cost savings to all of our communities by us working mutually together to serve that. However, to one of the points that were made, I would like to challenge the individual who was cited as opening a gate in twenty seconds to come in and show us that that could be accomplished. But the other major point that I want to make, I assure you, my personnel from NIXA will not use a $1 million fire truck to ram a gate to open it. We do have tools that we could open a gate. It's going to drastically slow down a response, we all know that, but my personnel would face some serious consequences. We would not intentionally ram a gate to just drive our way through it or open it. So I'm writing you guys this letter, it was dated June 24th, today regarding the Holder Road closure situation. On Monday, April 14th, I did some practical triage of the situation by driving and recording both time and miles with the assumption that Holder Road closure would be granted. From the north end of the low-water slab, not knowing exactly where the gate referenced may be, I just picked a point there, the low-water slab. So from the north, driving to ZZ West of fourteen, and then east to my closest fire station at 301 South Nicholas was a total of eleven-point-eight miles, and that drive took me about fifteen minutes and fifty-five seconds. From the south of the low-water slab, south to fourteen east, to the same fire station is a five-point-three and eight...five-point-three mile and eight-minute travel time. Again, just driving normal, speeds, normal time of day, those kind of things, normal traffic. So roughly half the time and half the distance coming from the south side of the slab. My agency responds to automatic aid with Clever Battlefield and mutual aid with Brookline Fire Protection District per longstanding agreements. Additionally, we have more than two hundred acres of federal property that we protect within the confines of the Wilsons Creek National Battlefield, only accessible from the main entrance of the park off of ZZ and Farm Road 182, I believe it is, or 186, and via the Park Road. So it's in the very southeast corner of the Wilsons Creek Park, and our mutual aid agreements with Brookline help cover the area because it is a very lengthy response time for us to get to that area. Closure of Holder Road, as mentioned before, would dramatically increase our response times to the residents north of the area. When members of the public require and contact 911 for emergency services, they expect a timely and efficient response. It would be a disservice to all to intentionally close this road and add both miles and minutes to the response. Response plans require multiple agencies to respond, as I previously mentioned, due to...to a fire in the rural areas due to a lack of water, from no available fire hydrants, lack of available manpower from some of our smaller departments, and essentially for the protection of our county as we all work together. I hope that you can see the value in keeping this important thoroughfare open for business for all. Once a decision is made to hopefully keep this road open, I hope and pray the county Road and Bridge Department can move forward with planned improvements to the low-water slab and other areas to make it safer for travel for all who want or need to use it. One last thing, you know, you may ask, well, do we really work together on these calls? And Monday afternoon, Clever had a fire that they were dispatched to on P Highway that they worked with Billings and Republic on. A few short minutes later, they were dispatched to another fire on Elm Street in the city of Clever. Had they had another call, a medical issue, a child not breathing, someone in cardiac arrest, a person trapped in a vehicle accident, or another fire that would require our response, those eight minutes additional that I've mentioned could be the matter of life and death for someone, for sure. The other point I also wanted to touch on, there was a reference to a gated community on Delaware Town Road not very far from the mentioned location of what we're discussing today. When I look at the map, that gated community is eight residences. Those eight people live on a road that is a dead end. It makes sense for that to be a gated area. I imagine they had a lot of traffic there that was attempting to access the river, which is where the road dead ends into. They're not affecting the sixteen-hundred other drivers that are potentially using that road, and they're not affecting countless property owners north of the area, or our responses to those who may live or work or travel in the areas north of the affected area. So a gated community makes sense, as mentioned previously on Riverbend Parkway, I think is the road official name. It just doesn't seem to make sense to put a gate in the middle of a well-traveled thoroughfare here. But everyone has done a great job making their points. I hope you all make the best decision for all on this, and wish you luck. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, anyone else? And I'd just ask our county engineer, Brandon, do you have anything that you want to add to this?
So I'd like to start by saying, the Christian County Highway Department, we do not have a professional opinion on this case. We've done our best to stay neutral through the whole process. We've met and discussed issues and items and reports and stats with both sides, and we've done our best to supply any information that anyone has requested without asking which side of the fence they're on for this project. So after saying that, I am happy to answer any questions the commission may have, or any questions about any of the data or reports that the folks brought up during their presentations.
So to kind of bring us up to date, you've been county engineer for how many years?
It will be eleven years in August.
Eleven years, and you've seen a lot of dirt roads and gravel roads, and you've been very instrumental in reducing the number of miles of roads in our first-class county to a much better road, and of course Holder Road was a dirt road at one time, but we spent... time, and, but we spent, we've spent quite a bit of time and, and money, taxpayers' money out on Holder Road, right?
We have. We do our best to distribute funds through all the county roads as needed, but with the high traffic that is on Holder, you tend to see more wear and tear on that road, so we do, we probably do pay attention more to Holder than we would a residential cul-de-sac type road, yes.
And because of the way that you have a system that you pick out the roads for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, you have a, you have kind of a moving calendar of, of what you'd like to, hopefully that we can afford to do each year in the county, right?
We do. We have, every road in the county, every segment of road in the county, we have an inventory score for that road, and that's based on deterioration, the width of the road, if the width is up to standard. So, you know, our, our base rock and our dirt roads have a very low score, roads that are recently asphalted have a very high score, and so we kind of use that list and that ranking, which is from zero to ten, to help us decide which roads we're going to pave. Of course, that's always a moving target because every winter we have freeze thaw, which, which puts brand-new roads on our list that we weren't expecting to have to take care of, but we do, right now we have a list out to two thousand thirty.
Yeah, and so I'm glad you said that, it's a moving target. We never know for sure what's going to happen, but, but you try to keep, keep that going, and we try to keep improving our roads. And so on Holder Road, we had already planned, it was on your schedule to, to do some improvements this year, correct?
It was. So in that area, we were planning to, and we still are planning to, double coat, chip and seal Kerr Road, but along with that, we were going to hot mix overlay Holder Road and add a double yellow stripe down the middle and some white edge lines. We've already replaced all of the signage with brand-new signage, we were able to do that earlier this year, kind of combination with late last year. But yes, those have been planned for a while, but we have put those on hold because of this petition pending the outcome of today. However, we did not delete those funds, we've just moved them to next year again pending the outcome of today.
And we're straightening out some curves?
We're not straightening. I wish we could do something up at ZZ, but right now, we're not doing anything that would require any right-of-way acquisition. We are widening, planning to widen a little bit on the curves where we are able to.
Okay.
Some folks that spoke earlier mentioned some rock that would need to be blasted and, and curves, drop-offs that would need to be filled, we're not doing any of that at this time, so just in locations where we're able to easily in order to get the, the hot mix overlay done.
Okay, and you did say we're going to, because I, as an older person that doesn't see as well at night, I, I think you're, you're going to put white lines on both sides at the, at the edges of the road and then maybe a line in the middle.
Double yellow down the center, yes.
Yeah, I think that's going to really help too, any, any time that we have roads that we don't have very many lights out there and things like that, I think that, that would help. So your plan would be to, to still do that again next year, right?
Pending the outcome of.
Depending on the outcome of this, you, we still, I mean, we still know.
It was not, it was not deleted, we've just temporarily moved it, because we certainly didn't want to have the case where if the commission voted a certain way today, then we, Holder would go to the bottom of the list and then have to work its way back up. It does need some surface attention, so we've just moved that to two thousand twenty-six.
And we've been working for, for several years on a, on a FEMA grant to help on this low-water bridge area.
Yeah, we've been involved in that for almost four years. It's called a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, but yesterday, we had a phone call with both FEMA and SEMA, and we've overcame some big hurdles and we're moving on to the next phase, so that's looking, looking positive for us.
Yeah, so I want to compliment our road department and the entire county, we are so good, the county is so good at getting grants. If we didn't get all the different grants from all, the Sheriff's Department, the road department, lots of different departments get grants, and we just couldn't do the things we provide, the services in this county, if we didn't get additional grants. And so this is one I think that we're going to get that will really help that low-water crossing area, and it's badly needed, and so I, I appreciate, appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah. Okay. Our chief, our chief from Republic, thank you, thank you, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen, my name's Dwayne Compton, I'm the fire chief for the City Republic. First week of August, I will be the chief for the city for twenty-two years, and during that time span, we have cut down Holder Road numerous times on mutual aid calls with Clever going south into Boaz, we've even cut through there to help NIXA. As the NIXA fire chief stated, there's a group of us that kind of all come together in that particular corner to provide a good quality service to the residents of Christian County. They've talked about the Knox Box or the Key Box to get into that, and I want to expand on that just a little bit, there's a little bit more to that than you realize. The keys to that are closely guarded, so they're locked in the fire truck in a vault. If one of those keys gets loose, and there's an inventory every month, you potentially have a key to every business in Republic, NIXA, Ozark that you could get open and commit a crime. So when we stop the truck, we have to physically stop, the keys are usually kept in a spot that is not readily visible in case somebody was to steal the fire truck, and that does happen. You have a key, a vault that you have to put a code into that's digitally tracked, you get the key out, then you have to go over and unlock the gate. So twenty seconds, not going to happen, I'm sorry. We are opposed to this road being closed. Like I said, we've used it, we've already used it once this year to go into a house fire, the mutual aid network that we have is something that's very robust, and that is a cut-through road to get through. We would, on behalf of the City Republic Fire Department, my staff would really like to see it upgraded, widened, flattened out, fix the bridge at the bottom. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank, thank you for your testimony. Do we have any other? Okay, if, if we don't have any other evidence to be presented, I think at this time, we can actually close this record and everybody's done a great job, I just want to say, all, all sides, I appreciate everyone's way they presented themselves and, and, and how important this is to every, to everyone. So at this time, I think I would entertain a motion to either, either approve or deny this petition.
I would like to, you know, it's our job as commission to remove the emotion behind and look at, at the section, so we are here to consider the petition filed to vacate a portion of Holder Road under the Missouri Revise two-two-eight-point-one-one-zero. That statute places the burden on the petitioners to show the portion of the road that they seek to vacate as useless and repairing at the same unreasonable burden on the county. Whether a public road is useless or is determined by whether it's public utility, and our Supreme Court has indicated that the finding of the ground for vacation required under Section two-two-eight-point-one-one-zero-one is in effect and finding of no public utility. Having considered all the evidence in this case and listening to the first responders and the different things, including the testimony, the exhibits, the petitioners' remonstrance, and the evidence, I personally do not find that the petitioners have met that burden. Therefore, I would make a motion to deny the petition vacated. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second roll call vote. Hall and Fahey, I think we're going to do a roll call vote.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Aye.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Aye.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Aye.
I would also like to make the motion, to also make the motion for the county counselor to draft the order of findings that in effect and consideration and approval by the commission.
Okay, we need a motion on that. Okay, we need a motion, we got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call vote again.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Aye.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Aye.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Aye.
Okay, I think, I don't think there's anything, anything else, I think this concludes the hearing today. Thank you very much, thank you.